If you find it sure. Now, we do have our microphone working. Need to use a higher than conversation, the teacher voice. Because it is, it is picking up, I'm getting sound. We are live. I love that scene. I'm Justin. I, I think.
Thank you.
Teachers at Tuesday's meeting who really gave good information and I think practical information. So hopefully we're going to come up with a happy medium that is somewhere between the current handbook that's supposed to still be in place. And the much more restrictive one that never was approved in the first place. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you. May I ask one more question if you'll allow? Sure. Sure. Thank you. For any of the students who may not be here today or don't attend board meetings, what should I tell them if they're curious of what's going on? Because they just don't know. It scares them because they do not know.
What maybe watch if if they want to know what happened, I think you can go back and watch the meeting through the live link. And or you can participate in it while it's going on. So that's what I would encourage them to do.
As far as an update on this particular topic, you'd say that this is not something that was that is on the agenda for tonight. Because quite honestly, it's not ready for the board to vote on. Really, what we got out of our last meeting is that we wanted to press pause and make sure we gave this all the attention that it deserved. And that's going to push that to the September 14 board meeting, where hopefully we'll be ready to vote on by then. And that's explicitly so that we can take the time to make sure we're really, really taking everybody's, you know, everybody's opinion and everybody's thoughts into it before we make a decision.
Got it.
We're trying to do our due diligence. Best thing I could say. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Nicole Tillman. Excuse me.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I mainly wanted to speak to, so I learned this recently. So if I'm I'm late to learning, then I'll apologize. But I recently saw the posting about the new principal. And I guess today, going back and forth with Dr. Roberts have learned, I guess, that Ms. Davis has been offered and accepted a promotion. Which I assume is congratulatory for her. And but I just, first of all, I just want to go on record that my son, we started sending our son to school at Arkansas Arts Academy. But when it was BCSA back in 2000, we've been longtime parents of the school. My daughter attends there now. And I just, I guess, I've actually gone back and looked to try to figure out where I received like an email that congratulating her on the promotion. And that a new principal would be, you know, would be posted, the the job would be posted and would be hired. And either I'm missing it, which I may be missing it. So I'm happy for someone to tell me on the call that there were multiple emails sent out and I somehow overlooked them. Perhaps I missed the meeting. I just feel like I, today, I feel like it's very in the dark. It's a big change for me. And again, it might be my fault, but it just feels like a big change for the school. And she has by far been the best principal we've had at that school. So I just want to go, I mean, I really want to give her accolades for how much work she has put into the school. She's been a great partner to the parents. Her communication has been excellent. She's been a champion for the students. And so it's just, so I'm speaking on behalf of probably one parent, maybe more parents, I'm not sure. That feel like if we were making that big of a change, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of discussion about the school handbook. But if we're making a change to the principal, unless it was, you know, and maybe she, you know, again, if she accepted a promotion, I would hope that an email went out congratulating her. So I'm going to pause there because I may have missed some communication. And and if that's the case, then somebody can tell me that. And I can just, I can finish my thoughts and move on.
I got an email. Did anyone else? Well, so there was also a letter from the, yeah, CEO congratulating her. That's what I remember seeing.
And I believe the job was posted fairly, you know, fairly light timeframe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, so I just need to go find that communication. Okay, so I will track that down. I mainly wanted to speak today because I just wanted, well, I wanted to listen in and I really wanted to. I know, obviously, she's she's accepted a promotion and I really wanted to go on record and just say how amazing she's been and give her the accolades that she deserves. So I'll pause. I know you don't have a lot of time and I'll let you continue and I will try to track down those communications.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, next up we have Madison Bolte. Bolte, Bolte.
Bolte.
Bolte. Oh, man, I was over two.
Hello, my name is Madison Bolte. I'm a junior here at Arkansas Arts Academy and have been here since kindergarten. The communication between students and the board has been and is insulting to not only the student, but also the staff. With the events of new policies, new administrators and change that affects us directly, the communication we are, we were promised has been completely absent. Being part of the daily A A community, we at least deserve respect and knowledge when we lose or gain staff, and we have not gotten that. A part of this is that, a part of this that is most frustrating is that you, the board, is that your children are the ones going here. And yet you fail to communicate them to us and their peers about their safety, their health and their stability. If you want this school to be a community, you have to give us an opportunity to voice our opinions and enforce those opinions before a decision has been made. Thank you.
Can I ask one follow up question?
Yes.
Just, there have been a lot, there's been a lot that's gone on here in the last three months. And if this is, I don't mean to put you on the spot, can you give us an example of a time where you feel like information wasn't conveyed to students or to?
None of us have ever been aware of any type of board meeting where any students were allowed to attend. This is the first one where any students were aware of any attendance.
So if I may, I'm going to make a proposition that Debbie and Dr. Roberts, that we just go ahead and add all student email addresses to the public announcements.
I agree.
Because I know that your parents are getting these emails, that they may be in their junk folder, but I'm a parent, I get the emails. These things are publicized and available. You guys are not getting sent, student emails are not getting this, obviously. So that obviously needs to change. If you have an art school email address, you need to be on the public announcement. This seems like a pretty easy way to alleviate 80% of the problem that's being discussed. You agree?
Yes. Okay. I will add that there's a link where you can sign up like you did tonight. And we're always excited to hear from students and
I love it when students
Yeah, here, I mean, it doesn't have to be something you want to change. You can kind of brag on your choir group or you can kind of brag on your sports team. Or we always want to hear from you. So hopefully getting this message out and getting you guys here more, we would love, we we love to hear from you. And if there is a problem, we want to hear about that too, because we don't want you just sitting back suffering, you know, so thank you.
Yeah, another thing we might do is add it to maybe the week of, in the morning announce, just give us have morning announcements, we get that it just I'm reminded. You get 100 emails and that if somebody says it the day of or a couple of days before.
Good prompting for administration to look in what the best ways of doing that are. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking.
Olivia Tillman.
Hello, I'm Olivia Tillman. I'm a junior at Venuson kindergarten. While you are the board and beyond that, parents, you're not here every day. And the decisions that you make, you're not directing it through your lives like it does us. Ms. Davis is the best principal we've ever had. She and Ms. Carpenter are the backbone of the school and do so much more for us than I think any of us can realize. These two administrators care so much for us and our education. Ms. Davis knows every student by name. She checks up on us. She cares about us. Both of them do. Every teacher here is also here because they truly care about us. With this change of position, not only are we losing our strong leader, but I know we will end up losing needed staff. The way they are being treated and the way we are being regarded is hurtful and harmful.
To support you guys.
Okay, last person I have on the list here, this is Sydney Smith.
Hello, I am both a senior and a student at Arkansas Arts Academy. And I apologize in advance for the sloppiness of my discussion. However, I have not had enough time to compose my perspective in the best manner. I understand that you do this with good intentions and wish only the best for us, but has it come to all of our attention? That there is a lack of communication in the student body regarding changes, specifically the principal change. As well as a lack of thought of how these decisions you make affect the staff and the students at the school. I have had peers in my personal life describe to me their anger and confusion towards the school and their poor communication skills. Resulting in people being a part of our ecosystem leaving promptly. This type of communication creates a stressful taxing environment. Students and staff would, should know about big school changes that are happening before they are already being decided. It has also come to my attention that this has been a recurring problem in the past years and has not been promptly dealt with. I can say for myself personally, this is overtly stressful in my class 2022. There is no discussion and only output, and we are left in the dust. And I know a lot of seniors that are progressively getting more and more confused as time goes on. I would like to inform you that many peers in my grade would have liked to attended this party, but couldn't take off because of the suddenness of your broadcasting. I know personally that I found out about Ms. Davis's new position through a job listing as well as many others. As well as one singular email sent to us. I thank you for your cooperation and allowing me to speak on the subject. And I hope to come to more board meetings in the future to speak about my perspective. I just hope in the future it can be more fleshed out for more seniors and more future leaders of the school to come. Thank you.
Let's, the last name I have on my list, did we have anybody else online or admitting person? No, no person signed up? Okay.
Well, we had one person sign up that did not want to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so moving out to new business, we just have one item and that is the, let's see, item 6A, the improvement of employment offer for a new high school principal. Allison, can you introduce us a little bit for us?
So I would like to introduce Dr. Brian Appleton to come up and speak. Brian, he's been, has had amazing, outstanding references, the quality of his work, some of his history, his experience in leadership. I think will be an excellent fit for our community as well as him being a musician. So I think he brings incredible qualities that we will be thrilled with and will help us advance forward.
Brian, you might tell us a little bit about you guys.
Sure, absolutely. My one.
It's a macro and it
It should be, yes, I'm good. All right. Well, first of all, board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I greatly appreciate that. So I think this job is a unique intersection of my arts background and my leadership experience and passion in that as well. In in college, I was a trombone performance major to begin with and then decided that I needed to do something other than a trombone performance degree, right? So I got a history degree and started teaching and at the same time have the opportunity to be a military musician with the Army National Guard for six years. And and I'd say that my trombone took me around the world and that's, that's pretty, that's pretty honest. So having the opportunity to to grow as an educator and as a leader over the past 15 years in education has come with with many great experiences and and that intersecting with that arts background, I think, provides a unique perspective that is certainly needed to be successful in this division.
Yeah, guess I have any questions for Brian?
And I would just like to say, students, thank you for using your voice. Like I, I'm encouraged. I've been to a lot of board meetings in my career where nobody shows up. So I applaud you for being here and for using your voice. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me entertain the motion to approve the hire of Dr. Appleton.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? The opposed? Okay, motion carries. Did you get the first and second step?
I did.
All right. Let's see, do we have any discussion of items since the publication of this agenda? No? Okay, then I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.